Join us, which is a somewhat slow process. But we're glad to have everyone come or be, I guess. All right. And we're close. We're almost there. And as we are just waiting for the remaining people to join, I just wanted to mention that for those who participated yesterday, since we do have limited spots, we really do hope that we can accommodate everyone. It's we actually have capacity for 500 today. We're getting close to that. We're at 381 now. But anyone who participated yesterday, if we get to a point where we where we are full, it would be fantastic if those of you who spoke, especially yesterday, can make sure at least to cede your speaking space to others. And I'm going to be keeping an eye out for repeats for that reason because we do just want to make sure that everyone can join us. So and it looks like we're almost there. And I think we're going to have some people continually joining. But let's go ahead and get started. So hi to everyone out there. Welcome to the second of three Alamo County School Board Town Halls related to reopening schools. We're really glad that people can join us today. We had a very full discussion yesterday. And so it's good to be able to continue that today. And first off, I want to introduce Katrina Carlson and Ellen Osborne, who are our two school members facilitating today. And also our guest, Dr. Denise Bonds, who is the Director of the Thomas Jefferson Health District. My name is Helen Dunn, and I'm the Public Affairs Officer for Alamo County Public Schools. And I'm just here to serve as a moderator during the town hall, excuse me, in which we'll be discussing all the different issues related to decision making as we think about reopening the schools in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I want to mention that we have a lot of questions on our mind. Everyone has a lot of questions on their minds as we think through this whole process in our community. And we are going to address questions in several different forums. And first off, I'm just going to share my screen so that people can see one of the forums by which we're going to share information, which is our very comprehensive K-12 Albemarle website. So for those of you who haven't yet navigated it, I would be I would urge you and encourage you to just take a look at it, familiarize yourselves with the site. If you just go to K12Albemarle.org, you'll see this little yellow space here. I'm not a super techie person, but but just click on Return to School, Transition to the 2020 2021 School Year. And you're going to see a really thorough website here with a lot of answers to the questions that you may have. So you'll see here in this sidebar that you've got things like cleaning and disinfection protocol. All of these are going to be really useful pieces of information for you to have. So please do take the time to just kind of understand what information is already out there for you as you try to learn more about all of this. And I'm going to just stop sharing my screen now. But so what we are asking is that today we really make an effort to contain our discussion to comments. So we want to hear your suggestions and your comments. But um, excuse me, we ask that you submit questions in the chat box. We are continuing to collect those. And you can obviously feel free to email them to me as well. My my email address has been out there for the all the communications around these town halls. We are going to get answers as soon as we can to all the questions that we receive as as possible. But really, these town halls are meant to be a forum for your school board members to hear concerns with regard to promoting safety of students, teachers and staff, and providing the best educational experience reasonable under these circumstances. And our school members are here to listen to you and to gather information that they can use as they make decisions about whether ACPS opens up virtually or with some in-person instruction. So with that, I just want to take a second to explain how this town hall will work. The session is scheduled for 90 minutes, technically for for 60, and then we have an extension for 30 more. My suspicion is that we will sneak into that. First on the agenda is going to be a brief presentation by Dr. Bonds, which we hope will give everyone a sense of some of the medical and epidemiological considerations of COVID-19 for our community and the reopening of schools. Then subsequent to her presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask her just two or three questions. So after that, our board members will provide brief updates on where they are in the planning process. And then we'll open the floor up to comments from participants. So again, comments and concerns. Please share comments, feelings and suggestions. We really do want to hear your questions. And we ask that you include those in the Zoom chat or, as I mentioned earlier, via email. We can direct questions to the correct personnel, school personnel to get answers for you. And a little nitty gritty, just if you want to comment, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. It's at the bottom in the participants list. If you look at the bottom of your Zoom menu. And I'll call on people in order. I'm going to call them three names at a time in order. So the order in which I say your name, please speak in that order. You'll have two minutes to speak. I am going to use a timer. And we just asked that you keep your comments respectful, obviously, and brief. The shorter they are, the more of your friends and family members and and community members, more they have a chance to speak. And and with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Denise Bonds of the Thomas Jefferson Health District.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you you can hear me? Someone thumbs up? Yep, good. So I'm going to start today by giving you an overview of the cases, both in the district and then specific in Albemarle County. Then I'll talk a little bit about how COVID affects children to the degree that we know. And then talk a little bit about some of the recommendations that many scientists have put forward for schools. So currently, as of today, we have 1,551 cases that have been diagnosed in the district. 129 of those individuals have required hospitalization, and we have had an unfortunate 30 fatalities. In the Albemarle County, there have been 685 cases of COVID-19. 50 individuals have required hospitalization, and we have had an unfortunate 10 fatalities. For children across the state, ages zero to nine, there have been 2,830. As of today, that's about 3.5% of the cases of COVID. For that same age group for our district, we've had 67 or about 4% of our cases. For children 10 to 19, there have been 6,274 cases across the state. That's 7.7%. In our district, there have been 113 or 7.3. In Albemarle County, as of yesterday, I'm sorry, I don't have updated statistics. There were 32 kids between the ages of zero and nine and 56 between the ages of 10 and 19. No, sorry, one hospitalization in the zero to nine in the district and two hospitalizations in the 10 to 19. No fatalities in children have been have happened in our district. We also have not had any cases of the complication that we often see or that we occasionally see in children, not often, occasionally. That is the multi-system inflammatory syndrome. There have been eight children diagnosed with that condition across the state so far in this pandemic. When you look at the numbers, we continue to see impacts in communities of color. And these communities are disproportionately affected in both cases and hospitalizations as well as deaths. 18% of our cases have been in African Americans, 29% in the Hispanic Latino population. This is also seen in our hospitalizations. As I said, 44% of our hospitalizations are amongst African Americans and 19% are Hispanic Latino. Deaths, 27% of our deaths have been African American. We have had two outbreaks in educational facilities in the district. There have been 24 such outbreaks across the state with 112 cases and no deaths. I can't really comment any further about those outbreaks in educational facilities, either in our district or across the state for privacy and legal reasons. We do have testing that is available for children. The district has a testing team that is out in multiple locations, two to three days a week, and they will test anyone over the age of six. UVA has conducted a number of events, and all of those have included children without any age limit. And I am aware of many pediatricians that are testing for COVID-19. So there are lots of places to get kids tested. I'm also pleased to say I think we have the UVA test kit problem. If any of you were on yesterday or listened to the board meeting earlier in the week, solved. So hopefully, they will begin community testing starting next week. Our current positivity rate for PCR tests for the district is 6.6%. That's down from last week's high of eight. In Albemarle, when I looked earlier today, it is 7.3%. So those are the current summary statistics. The state, and specifically the governor's office, has issued guidance for schools based on the phase that you are in. So during Phase One, special education and childcare for working families could continue in person. When we move to Phase Two, Phase One continued, plus preschool through third grade, English learners and summer camps were allowed to be held in person. And finally, for Phase Three, all students may receive in-person instructions as can be accommodated with physical distancing. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about how COVID impacts children. And I want to put a huge caveat at this moment in time. This is a brand new disease. And before January this year, we'd never heard of COVID-19. And so our knowledge changes every single day. And what I say today may very well be somewhat different in a few weeks or a few months. So just keep that in mind. But here's what we know at this moment in time. Children of all ages are at risk for COVID-19, but they appear to have fewer complications and do better generally than adults do. The symptoms that we see in children are similar to the symptoms that we see in adults, although some studies, not all, some, show more GI symptoms and either fewer cases of fever or lower fever or the fever appears later in the disease. There is no specific medical treatment for COVID infection in children. It is primarily supportive care, so medications to reduce the fever, making sure they drink lots of fluids and get lots of rest. There are many, many, many studies going on right now to try and find an appropriate treatment. I do want to say at this point that it is really important that we remember that schools serve many purposes besides education. Schools provide counseling for individuals that are at risk. They provide special treatments for individuals that have particular needs and special education needs. Many of our families, for children, it's two of the main meals that they get a day. It is a safe place for children who are at risk, and it also provides structure. So having said that, if schools were to reopen, here are some things that many experts are encouraging, including myself. The first is to create a culture for maintaining health. And there are three ways to do this. So first, train staff, teachers and students on the symptoms of COVID and other illnesses and what to do if they identify either a fellow staff member or teacher or a student with those symptoms. The second is work within your facilities to normalize mask wearing and social distancing. I am not a pediatrician by training, but I am told by many, many pediatricians that if you normalize and make it what everybody does, kids are very amenable to regular mask wearing and can adopt that quite easily. And then the third one is to make it okay to be ill. We need to make sure that we understand everyone gets sick and that when you do get sick, the appropriate thing is to stay home. So to make sure that all of the incentives run in the same way, we should get rid of perfect attendance awards so that kids don't come to school sick because they want to get that certificate at the end of the year. And we need to make sure that staff and faculty and teachers understand and model appropriate behavior by staying home when they are ill. Other recommendations to consider during this time is to use cohorts of small groups. So try and keep kids together in the same classroom and to limit the use of shared facilities. So to the degree that kids can have their meals in their classroom or go out and have playground time at the same time and that those cohorts travel together, that will limit spread throughout a school. And if there is an outbreak of COVID, it'll be more contained and to a smaller number of people. Use outdoors. We know that COVID is transmitted through aerosolized secretions as well as touching contaminated surfaces. And outdoors is safest. Being at home is the absolute safest. But if you're at school, being outdoors is going to be safer than being in the classroom. There's lots of air currents, aerosolized disperses more easily, and it lowers the risk for individuals to get sick from each other. And then make sure that you clean high-touch surfaces on a regular basis. Make sure that the ventilation is appropriate. If there are windows and can be opened to get that outdoor air into a classroom, that's great. And I would point out that this cleaning and ventilation, while it is important part of the response, it is not sufficient in and of itself. To keep kids safe in school, we really need universal mask wearing and appropriate social distancing of six feet. Finally, and a suggestion that I saw in the National Academy of Sciences' recent article that looked at all of the evidence was a multi-stakeholder group that met on a regular basis to really walk through the impact of all of these potential measures on students, family, teachers, staff, administration, to come up with reasonable middle ground that would keep people safe but recognize the importance that having kids in the classrooms can be for many, many of our families. So I will stop there. So I don't know if there's time for questions or not. You are certainly welcome to send questions to us, and we'll do our best for those particular ones to answer them for you.
Yeah, so let's see if we have. Thank you so much, Dr. Bonds. I think that's a really helpful presentation, and we sure do appreciate it. If we have time, if you have time for maybe two questions, because I know you have a very busy schedule. I would call now on on, let's see, I've got El Campbell and Heidi Bennett. So if I could call on both of them, then I think that would be great if they're there.
I don't have a question. I have a statement.
Okay.
So I'm Laurie Campbell, and I am I'm going into my 34th year of teaching kindergarten. And I'm very proud to say that it's all been in Albemarle County. I love my students, but I'm scared to death about going back to school. I'm a lover and I'm a nurturer, and I will become paralyzed and traumatized if I can't hold my kindergartner's hand or I can't celebrate with them by giving them a high five or a gentle hug or sitting next to them, helping them get through that first story that they learned to read. And I can't hug them and wipe their tears. This is a very painful thought. And it's not just coming from me. I'm looking at the child coming into a classroom with an adult who you're going to be with all day long, but is not going to be able to nurture you in the way that children need to be nurtured is very traumatizing to the child. And kids are moving learners. Masks and shields and remaining in a specific space all day is going to be traumatizing to them. And I really don't think that our community necessarily understands that. I'm a working parent. I was that parent if my husband didn't go to work, he didn't get paid. Thank God for Albemarle County and our benefits that I was able to do it. And I'm a proud mother of two Albemarle County graduates. But at the same time, if I knew my children were going into a classroom where there was no comfort in them, I would be doing more searching for therapists to help them through this traumatizing thing, this event, versus helping them to become better people. And I just feel that virtually is the way to go right now. It's not the answer for long term. But we can't do this to our kids. And it's not about our teachers, it's about our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Campbell. We certainly appreciate your comments and are glad that you spoke up. And I believe it was Heidi Bennett next, but I don't see her in the queue anymore. If you're there, please feel free to speak up. Otherwise, I'll call on the next person. Okay, so I think we've got Jeff Vergalis, and this will be our last question for Dr. Bonds.
Hi, my name is Jeff Vergalis. I have a question for Dr. Bonds, but more really as of a statement as well. I'm a pediatrician in town. I am also a parent, but I have a master's in public clinical data and have been spending the past three months working with the camp industry to figure out about how we can safely bring kids into the summer camp world over the last over the last three months. I've been working with six camps up in the state of Maine to figure out how we can mitigate spread. And I can tell you that there has been a lot of success and things that we have learned by bringing thousands of kids up the state from all different parts of the regions and interacting with them from a significant amount of time with all of the parents, counselors and teachers that are up here with them. I really want to urge everybody to take a step back in this. We have learned a lot about how kids are. We have learned a lot about how kids' resiliency is. We've learned a lot about transmission from parents to children, from children to parents, and from children to children. We do not know everything, as Dr. Bonds had said. But we are very, very understanding that the most important thing that we have to do is look after the safety of the kids. I have been watching thousands of children up in the state of Maine during this summer be incredibly resilient with wearing masks, with distancing when needed, with interacting in the ways that they can because they're just so grateful to be in that opportunity that we have. While I hear and feel very strongly that we can do this safely, we have data and science that back that up. And we want to do an impressive job of being able to work very carefully with the teachers and all of our public health officials, of which I am one of them, to figure out ways that we can do that. Kids will be fine, but they need to be trusted to be as resilient as we can. And I am continuing to offer in the best way that I can to be of help to anyone, and I will happily get on the phone with any teacher if I can. And I want Dr. Bonds to understand that, too, that one of the most important things that we can do is work together. And that's not the feeling that a lot of parents and teachers have right now.
Thank you so much for your comments. We do appreciate that, certainly. And we are taking all of this in and noting all of it. Thank you. Well, Dr. Bonds, we really do appreciate you having been here. And it always it's very, I think it stimulates great conversation, and it really does help keep our community informed. So we were so grateful to you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And so next, we will, we are just going to, I'm going to hand the floor over to our school board members. And I just want to remind everyone that the expectation is that you give them just a brief moment to speak. And then we will open up the floor for comments from you all in the order in which you raise your hands, and you'll have a maximum of two minutes. So with that, thank you so much. And just another one last quick reminder that we are going to publish answers to all these questions as soon as we can, as well as everything that you're submitting in your chat box as soon as we can, as well as posting a link to this YouTube very soon. It happened very quickly yesterday. And I just wanted to point out that we have 498 participants, which is great. I think we're having a really good discussion, and I'm so glad to see how engaged everyone is. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ellen Osborne and Katrina Carlson.
Hello, everyone. I'm Katrina Carlson, the school board member from the Rio District. I'm so glad to have the opportunity to hear directly from you today so that we can understand more about what issues surrounding the school divisions and the school board's development of options and decision making about our schools. First off, I want to make sure that you all understand that although the school board has decided to shift the first day of instruction to September 8 to provide more time to prepare, no final decision has been made about how Albemarle County Public Schools will reopen. It's not an easy decision to make because nobody, no one disagrees that it's the best for students' social, emotional and cognitive development to be in school with the support of their teachers, peers, and everyone else in the school. Even a hello from the bus driver is something that many look forward to. But as you know, this is not a black and white decision. Ultimately, it's will be the school board that makes this decision of how to balance the health risk presented to our children with the educational challenges. We are currently considering how we can balance the needs of all of our 14,000 students, our 2,500 employees and our larger community while having the best possible outcomes. We have received hundreds of letters with community members' questions, suggestions and concerns, and I'm very appreciative of those. We are so grateful for that input, and we are using it to inform our decisions. The questions that have been submitted in writing prior to this meeting, and I believe the ones also that are appearing in the chat function, those ones are going to be answered, and they'll be added to a frequently asked question sheet, which will be published on our website for reference. Having said that, and perhaps some people here who were in the meeting yesterday can attest to this, we have to acknowledge that we don't know everything today that we'll know by July 30. We don't know what we'll our next school board meeting, and we don't know what we'll know by September 8, when our schools are scheduled to reopen. So the goal of this meeting is not to answer every question right now, although, as I said, we're going to publicize the answers and put them on the website that Helen walked us through. Today, we are looking forward to hearing your concerns, learning more about your experiences and opinions so that we can make the most informed decision possible. And it's also an opportunity for us to listen to each other and the needs of the community. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Ellen.
Thanks so much, Ms. Carlson. Again, I'm Ellen Osborne, representing the Scottsville Magistero District. I'd like to talk a bit further about the process we've used as a school board in our decision making so that everybody can understand what factors into this process. I'd like to first reiterate that our school division has a fundamental obligation of keeping students and staff safe and healthy in addition to educating them. As you know, the coronavirus landscape is changing daily. Our process for coming to a decision about our school's reopening has included closely monitoring the infection rates and levels of risk in our community, and has been premised on those risks improving. The process has been as follows. The planning stage, in May and June, the school system assembled a task force to prepare a plan for reopening that included four areas of focus: healthy environment, healthy staff, healthy students, and healthy learning. In addition to division staff, school principals, counselors, and a few teachers, school nurses, custodians, transportation staff, and many others were part of those working groups who created that document, which can be found online as well. Division staff presented scheduling considerations and an update on July 9 that provided options given the constraints of transportation and space. Three hybrid options were presented. We have since surveyed teachers and parents. And finally, there will be a special school board meeting on July 30 with an all-virtual option presented. Since there is no public comment for special meetings, the school board initiated these town halls in the hope that we can hear from as many of you as possible. I want to clarify the board's role in these conversations. Our purpose is to hear and understand your concerns and to make sure that the plans presented by division staff address those concerns. Regardless of the model that we eventually decide to use when we begin school, we will make special provisions for our most vulnerable students. Additionally, we're maintaining a focus on technology and providing Internet and devices for all students so that all students will have equitable access based on his or her learning needs. So with that, we'd like to open it up for conversation with our participants. Please remember to keep your comments brief so that others can have the opportunity to speak if they wish. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen in the Zoom menu under the participants list. Thanks so much for being here.
All right, so I have, and I don't have last names for everyone, so my apologies for that, but I have next Mary, and then Julie McGovern and Ryan D. So if you'll, please feel free to speak up in that order. I think I just somehow lost Mary. So go ahead, go ahead, Julie. Or Mary, okay, there you are, there you are. Sorry, hang on one sec, Julie.
Hi, I'm speaking as a parent and a teacher. This will be my 20th year with the county. I teach at Mountain View, which is a very crowded school. And with the social distancing guidelines, we are informed that our fourth and fifth grade classes would take place at Monticello High School if we go back face-to-face. So I assume that meant we would have classrooms at Monticello, which is not the case. So I think parents should know that the plan is for four classrooms to be held in the gym. Two classrooms will be in the wrestling room, and two classrooms will be in the high school weight room, which was very smelly when we went to Toric. So to me, this is not providing acceptable accommodations. This is warehousing kids. Not a lot is gonna be learned in a room with no technology. There's, we have no projectors, we have no way of showing kids what we're doing. There's been talk of holding class outside. It's 95 degrees outside. There is no shade outside of Monticello High School. It is an open field. Kids don't learn outside, they roll around in the grass. Kindergarten, fifth grade, it doesn't matter. So I think when parents say they want kids to get back to school, it's not back to school. It's not what they are used to seeing at schools. It's not what kids are used to having. Kids are going to be at their desks in their six-foot space for the majority of the day. They will eat lunch at their desk, they will have specials at their desks. There's not gonna be small group learning. You're going, kids are going to be at their seats facing one direction the entire day, right? Which is what education has spent the last 50 years getting away from because we know that is not best practice. So parents, you know, I'm a parent as well. I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader. My husband and I both work. I understand there's no one solution that will please everybody. But just think about going back to school is not what you think it's going to be. It's, it's just not, it can't be.
Thank you so much for those helpful comments, Mary. And I think we have Julie next.
Yep, can you hear me?
We can, Julie, thank you.
Great, thank you for hosting these town halls. I think they're important, and these are conversations we need to be having. My family has a long and enriching and very cherished relationship with Almaral County and its teachers. I currently have four children in Almaral County Schools in both, actually in elementary and middle and high school. So I feel like we're experiencing a lot of what is out there, and we have a wide experience of the concerns and questions that people have. Some of those students are honor students, some of them have IEPs, some of them are ESOL students, some of them are children of color. So we've really got a wide range of considerations. Right now, I feel like we're being asked to choose an educational path, but I feel like there is so little that I understand. And actually, what Mary just said was very helpful because she, although we don't go to Mountain View, we, she really framed up an experience that I've been unable to imagine. The virtual model seems likely to be a portion of everyone's experience this year, no matter what, but I still have no sense of what a day of instruction would be like for my children. I don't know if they'll have dedicated teachers or if they'll rotate through a team who work together to teach, say, math and have pre-recorded videos. I don't know if every teacher at every school level will have the same expectations for developing in-person relationships with children, for teaching small groups, for reaching out one-on-one. I know from springtime that there was a wild difference between how people approached that, and I really understood why because we were flying by the seat of our pants in springtime. But I don't know what model people are looking at now and what expectations that we asked to meet. I know that there is a huge difference between a pre-recorded video lesson and working with a class-wide Zoom and working in a small group. I don't know if my Mesa student will still be taught by Mesa teachers if she's virtual. In which case, why is she doing Mesa? I don't know if my child with an IEP who needs one-on-one adult support for academic subjects will get that. And I don't know how our classmates who don't have internet access will be supported and will join us and will remain part of the school life. If our kids...
Thank you so much, Julie. Yeah, thank you so much for sharing those comments. All of this is very helpful for us. I don't know if, now that we've had two comments from two of our participants, if Katrina and Ellen would like to speak, or I know we've got Ryan next in the queue as well.
No, the only thing I would add is that both of those comments were incredibly useful. So please keep them coming, and I'm taking notes if you see me looking down. I'm, that's what I'm doing, trying to summarize what you're telling us. So thank you, everyone.
And staff can probably correct this, but my understanding is that the fourth and fifth graders at Mountain View would only be moved to Monticello if a large number of students opted for the in-person instruction.
All right, Ryan, we want to hear from you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm a parent of three, three young kids, all elementary age. One with an IEP for significant special needs who requires a one-on-one aide, and then two other wonderful children as well. I'm also an educator, so I see both sides of this because there are benefits and drawbacks to all the decisions that need to be made. What I do just want to say, I, we've heard a lot of parents be really concerned that virtual learning in the spring was not robust. I just want to say, teachers were not okay with that either. We were told we were not allowed to teach synchronously. We were told we were not allowed to teach any new content. It was all review. So I just want to say that virtual learning can be robust, and I believe even for my children who are all very different, that that can be done well. But we need the time to plan that. So I just, I just want to say that we need time, and we're asking for that, and we hope that the board will consider that because we can make this very robust. Teachers are extremely flexible people. Most of us have children ourselves, and we, we want good instruction. We want good education. It can be done. There are models, there are platforms, there are strategies that many will learn about. So I just want to say, we hear parents on their concerns about what it looked like in the spring, and we want to transform that. And I want that as a parent as well for my, for my three children. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan. That's, I think we really appreciate hearing from you. And we do have up next, so in this order, Kristin, Jonathan, and Katie. We want to hear from you as well. So please do go ahead.
Hi, this is Kristin. You can hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, sorry. First of all, thank you for holding these. I watched yesterday's Zoom this morning and then wanted to call in today. So I really appreciate all the work that's going into this and the many facets of it. But I did have a couple of points I wanted to bring up. And one is if the doctor who spoke, I think his name was Varellis, or if the doctor who presented in the beginning, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, if you could speak to the idea that there's a lot of comments that are being written that say, you know, it's not the law that you have to report if your test is positive. But what, from what I've read and from what was said on yesterday's meeting, it sounded like that's a little misleading because the majority of people, your results are immediately reported to the health department, and most people would then notify their employer and/or the school and would want to do what's right for their community. And so if one of the doctors could address that and what their experience has been, that would be wonderful. But the second point I wanted to make is the idea that taxpayer money is going to be used for childcare for teachers, yet so many families are in the same exact situation with needing childcare because there's no school, and they're not having any relief. And I also don't understand the idea that it wouldn't be safe to go to school and have children with an adult in the room, but it would be safe to have a childcare/ daycare sort of setup with children and a teacher in the room, or I'm sorry, an adult. So if you could address those, that would be great. And again, thank you very much.
So in terms of addressing, I don't, I don't know. I'm happy to defer to Katrina and Ellen if they have any responses to that. We do appreciate your comments very much. So with that, Katrina or Ellen?
No, I think, I think one part of this, Kristin, is processing what you're saying. So that is something that's been brought up a lot, and the childcare, providing childcare has not been fully fleshed out. And so I'm just thankful to hear your point. And I mean, that it's gonna be, I guess I will say, I personally plan on bringing up the issue of childcare at the school board meeting because it is a concern that I've had raised by several constituents. And I am also a working parent. I'm actually babysitting kids right now. They're outside of my husband's doing it while I'm doing this meeting. And then I'd also, I guess, just say to Ryan that I thank you for pointing out that virtual learning can be much more robust than it was in the spring. So no, I don't have anything to add other than I'm processing it all.
And I'm not familiar with what the plans are regarding childcare yet.
So Jonathan and Katie, so Jonathan, you're up next.
Yes, like Dr. Vergalis, I'm a pediatrician. I have not been working with camps, however, so I can't address what he's been, what he was talking about. But I will address some questions that people have had about people reporting here at UVA. Employees are not required to report a diagnosis to their leadership. However, that has happened. And I think everyone should know that everyone is gonna do what is best for everyone. I think we have to look at the good in people. People are not trying to get other people sick. My question comes to, so I'm a father of four kids, two in middle school and two in elementary. I think my two oldest will do well with whatever comes forward, whether it's virtual or hybrid. However, my two boys, who will be in second grade and kindergarten, and as a pediatrician, I just cannot advocate for them to be on a screen for the majority of the day. So we definitely need to know what it would look like. My other question is, I have the capability of hiring childcare if need be, unlike many people, but I do have that ability. And if the, if we do go all virtual, we have been thinking of doing homeschooling. And would the school district allow the use of Almaral County curriculum in that regard? Would they publish that so that parents or caregivers who would like to homeschool have that ability? And then I implore, employ, implore the board to really make a decision soon so that everyone can make a decision and to really let know, everyone know what it's going to look like.
Thanks so much, Jonathan. Your questions are well noted. If Katrina or Ellen has a response to any of that that they'd like to log right now, that's, that's fantastic. And otherwise, we've, as I said, we've noted your questions, and we will certainly work as fast as we can to get answers out there.
I would say that, because I saw someone say in the chat, a decision on how the school year is going to start is gonna happen on June 30th, July 30th. Just so we're clear on that, that's, that's the goal.
And my understanding is that the younger kids would not have multiple hours on screens. But probably somebody on staff can address the curriculum issue, and I guess we'll do that on, either on the website or however we're addressing questions in the chat.
Great, Katie, please, you know, feel free to speak, thank you.
Thank you. So I've got a couple, just kind of comments and some questions. Looking at trauma-informed care, I know that's something that a lot of people within our community are trained in. But you think about the trauma of dropping a kid off at school for a mom that doesn't have other options. And your kid starts crying, for example. That woman is not allowed to leave the school without feeling emotional tugging, and then she's thinking about her kid all day at work. But you have a teacher that can swoop the child up and love on the child, and all of a sudden, mom can get her work done during the day. So, you know, you think about that trauma aspect from both the parental and the child aspect, especially for these younger children that are, you know, crying because Bobby stole their toy, and they're not used to having kids around them, and you're six feet away going, please don't cry in the corner, please don't do that. You know, these, these young children don't really understand social distancing, and especially from each other. I want to hug my best friend. That's traumatic for these kids. The other piece is the curriculum, and what does virtual look like? That does play a huge role in our decision. And these surveys have come out prior to knowing that. The other factor that we have in our particular situation is our normal childcare situation is someone who has Afib asthma and is over the age of 70, whose husband has asthma, pacemaker, defibrillator, and over the age of 70. The other option we have is over the age of 90. So, you know, looking at that, if our little one does go to kindergarten, she's socially isolated from her grandparents at this point. Because even if she doesn't catch it or is a carrier, we don't know, we can't risk her bringing it home to them. So these are all factors that really play into it. And then the last thing I have, if you don't mind, very quickly, is just one quick question. We heard something along the lines of all this planning that if they split the classrooms, it will be partially teachers and partially TAs. Will the students be getting the same level of education regardless of the situation? Or is that not so? Can you elaborate on that?
So that's a, that's a question that I think is a great one to submit to staff and personnel who are in better position to answer for you. So we have noted your question, Katie, thanks so much. And, and we will be communicating these answers to these kinds of questions out as soon as possible. And next up is, we've got next three are Heidi, Irene, and Molly. So if you, if you three would hop on in, and we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, this is Heidi Gillen-Bennett, and I am a parent of two kids. And can you hear me? Yes, okay. I'm a parent of two kids, also a former teacher. My question is regarding the county's response plan for positive cases in the school. It sounded like there's a draft underway. I urge you to circulate that to all of the parents and the community before our decision needs to be made so we can help understand what the risks are better of sending our child to in-person school. Specifically, under what conditions will parents be notified that our child was exposed to a positive case in the school or in their classroom? So for example, if the ACPS rule is that children stay six feet apart in the classroom, yet they're allowed to remove their mask for eating, would I be notified? And what happens when a parent then refuses to share their information with the health department for contact tracing? Would a school be aware that there is a positive case? And who will be notified? Thank you.
So we have Eileen Gomez on the line, and she will take a second to introduce herself and then also address some of what you've just said. So thanks so much, Heidi. This is Helen Dunn, Momentary User Error. Where I'm just looking to let Eileen in, one second, everyone, I'm sorry.
It looks like you unmuted me. This, let's see.
Thanks, Eileen, yeah, we can hear you.
This is Eileen Gomez, and I am the school nurse coordinator for Almaral County Public Schools. And I am also, this year, going to be the COVID coordinator. And so I can address some of these questions. The first one that has come up a few times was the reporting of COVID-positive testing. And so what happens with COVID, as well as any of these reportable infectious illnesses? The doctor who does the test reports positive cases to the health department. And then the health department will contact the employer or the school if it's a student. And they, they may not say the person's name, but they will say somebody, and they probably will say the name because they, they need to... to get the contact information for people who may have been exposed. So we'll find out that way rather than directly from the person who, who tested positive. So we're not going to have people out there testing positive and we don't know about it. And then we will communicate that to families. And then, then, um, Heidi, what was the other question you had? Is she unmuted? The procedure, if somebody is diagnosed with COVID, okay, that, that procedure will be that we will work with the health department to determine which students and staff are considered close contacts. And then the, the health department will notify those people and tell them they need to be quarantined for 14 days and monitor their own symptoms. Uh, the person who's got diagnosed, there is criteria for that person to return. It's either test-based or symptom-based. So we do have that spelled out when they'll be allowed to return.
Thanks so much, Eileen. That's really helpful. Thank you. Um, and up next is Irene and then Molly.
Hi, um, my name's Irene Crone. I'm a parent now of Almarle County of a special needs high school student and a teacher at Broaduswood Elementary. As a parent and teacher, I want to express my strong support for an all-virtual opening. In looking at the data from the Thomas Jefferson Health District, the number of cases in our, in our community continues to rise. And looking forward to the return of UVA students in the community in August, I believe it's likely that this trajectory is going to increase. While current data suggests young children are less likely to become seriously ill, there are risks of severe illness and death. Many of our school systems in Virginia have already announced that they are opening virtually after extensive research into the pros and cons. As a teacher of 20 years, I feel that the recommended safeguards for keeping staff and students safe within our building simply can't be achieved. Students and staff must wear masks, hand wash appropriately, and be six feet away from others at all times. Children, especially in grade skated two, are not developmentally capable of this type of self-discipline. And schools will not be able to offer students a school day that looks like anything they've experienced in the past. Teachers won't be able to hug, wipe noses, tie shoes, or allow students to approach them for help or support. Rules were, rules will be rigid and invoke fear as students are reminded repeatedly to keep their masks on and stay away from their peers. They'll have more freedom to move about, feel safe, and be children in their own homes. Teachers and staff members, many of whom have been living in quarantine for the past five months, will be forced to enter buildings where they don't feel safe. And I'm one of those. Data is inconclusive surrounding the degree to which children and young adults spread the disease. We have no control over the exposure that our students have in their homes and throughout the community. I feel that we can provide a rich online learning experience for our students with ongoing staff development and continued support for students and parents. Our research, our resources should now be focused on making sure every student has a working device and adequate internet connectivity and making sure every teacher is equipped with the skills to deliver quality online learning. We as a school system can look after our students while also looking after our employees. We can focus on providing one-on-one virtual instruction, visiting tutors for struggling students and special ed students. Continue our efforts to serve students with food insecurity and provide counseling to those who are struggling. Each building can be creative in their response to their unique needs. In addition, we can and should be asking the businesses in our community so to support this plan by offering flexible scheduling for employees who have children in our school system.
Thank you so much, Irene. We, we really do appreciate your comments. And if you had more to add, I would ask that you just send that along to me in an email or, or add that to the chat here. We just want to make sure that other people have a chance to speak as well. Thank you. Thanks so much, Irene. We appreciate it. Um, and next up is Molly.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. So my name's Don Ricci. I'm Molly's husband. Uh, so private schools in the area look like they're moving forward with plans to reopen. Daycares that are currently open are subsequently considering private kindergarten options as well. How is it that they're opening while public schools may not? I assume you guys are all working off the same information. And if you do close while others do reopen, have you guys considered the very likely significant increase in the learning gap that will be created by those who can't afford those private options versus those who can?
So, um, thanks so much for your question. I think you said, Don. So we, uh, I'm happy to ask Katrina or Ellen if either would like to respond to that. I don't think we'll be able to respond to any questions regarding public, uh, private schools because obviously we, that's not, uh, that's not our business. But, um, but here we, you know, I'll give them a chance to respond.
So I would say that our obligation is to the public, to all of Almarle County. Whereas private schools are a for-profit entity and they have different motivations. It's, it's a different ballgame.
I guess, um, I would acknowledge and register that that is an upsetting reality. I know I'm personally upset to think that public schools will be happening virtually. Whereas if you have money to pay, you can afford to send your kids to school. Um, I will say, I again think, um, I was in a, I'm on the Virginia Discovery Museum Board and I was in a meeting this morning and, um, someone, we were talking about a lot of organizations that they don't have to reopen or not reopening. And some of those private schools, they're not going to exist if they don't figure out a way to reopen. So it's, if they're prioritizing different things, um, and they might have different constraints. But it does not seem fair.
All right. So next we have Michael, John and Ashley. So, um, Michael, please feel free to, to join us, speak up.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Michael. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm a parent of three children in the county school system, but I want to speak mainly as a developmental psychologist, someone who is trained in trauma-informed care and worked, uh, with children who have been traumatized, both at through, uh, working with Child Protective Services and in education. And I appreciate the medical doctors' perspectives about, uh, summer camp and, uh, learning environments like that. Public school systems are not summer camps. And a major difference between, uh, a summer camp and public school is the children have the perception, at least, and, and rightly so to a certain extent, that they do not have choice about whether to go to school. Um, and because of that, and because of the, the, the type of behavior that children who have been traumatized exhibit, I'm sadly confident, um, that there will be a lot of impulsive behavior. Children will, if you, if we, I would say they will be wanting to hug their friends or isolate in a corner and cry. And it will be an extremely difficult situation and traumatizing for the children and the teachers. I would suggest, um, that the experts in this situation are the teachers. All the comments from the teachers should be listened to and raised, frankly, most prominently in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael. We appreciate it. Um, and next, John.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for, for listening. Um, so as a parent, I, I can't tell you how frustrating this is. Everything I read, everything from the CDC, CDC, everything Dr. Bonds was saying, everything that I hear says the best thing for the kids to do is return to school. The only opposing view that I've heard comes from teachers or the teachers' union. And as a parent, everybody I talk to feels that we're going to get ignored because the teachers' union is so powerful. And the school board's going to listen to the union only. And, you know, I read the petition that they made and it's excuses after excuses after excuses that are inconsistent with anything that I've read from the CDC or other sources. I've got a six-year-old. And so, um, you hear about the traumatic event and, oh, it's going to be a traumatic event and the kids are going to be huddled in a corner. Well, we were out today and he's, looks at me totally unsolicited and says, hey dad, I love this new mask. It's super cool and, uh, and my friend has one just like it, but I think mine's cooler. And so, you know, kids are resilient. They're adaptable. They're smart. He's now using a mask and it's, it's an accessory. It's not something that he has to wear. That's, it's traumatic. It's just the way it is. You know, I understand there's no right answer. Nobody that I know of has been around since the last pandemic. So, you know, we're trying to learn and we don't want to put teachers at undue risk, but hospitals are open. Everybody else is getting back to life as usual. But I, I have this fear that the union's going to put their feet down and going to keep our kids from learning. Like I said, I've got a six-year-old. You try and teach him to sit in front of a computer for three hours. It's not going to happen. You know, there may not be right answers because we're learning. We're going to learn and move forward. But there are definitely wrong answers. And a wrong answer, you know, just as sending your kid to school without any mask or precautions or, or would be wrong. You know, you can't go on forward right now like we were. That would be a wrong answer. But the same thing goes for expecting an elementary school child to sit in front of a computer screen for three hours by themselves. I can't get my kid to sit through dinner. How am I expecting to do that?
Thanks so much, John. We, we do appreciate your comments. Um, just one point of clarification, we don't have teachers' unions in Virginia. But your, your points are well taken and we do appreciate your comments. Um, and so on to Ashley, I believe you're up next. So, um, please feel free to, to take a moment to speak.
Hey, my name's Ashley and I am a 17-year teacher and I'm at Mountain View Elementary. I want to echo something that John said, that being in school is the best. Teachers believe that, parents believe that, the board believes that, there's no doubt. However, I really want to remind everybody and urge the board to remember that a virtual start is just that. It is a start. It allows time for all of the unanswered questions to be considered and worked out in a thoughtful way. A virtual start is not a forever plan. It's a slow and steady plan that makes so much more sense than rushing into something with so many unanswered questions. I have a quick question for this, uh, board members. It's my understanding that the Board of Supervisors will meet early next week to consider going back to phase two. How will their decision impact your, the school board's decision on how to open schools?
So I, I just want to clarify that, that meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting will be on Monday. And that will not necessarily definitively affect, um, affect the school board's decision. That's not something that anyone should assume is, is correlated. Katrina and Ellen, please feel free to speak up if you'd like to.
Yeah, I would just say that, um, there is a kind of a belief going around or a rumor perhaps that if the county, and I thought the same thing for if the county moves back to phase two and make it so that we couldn't have in-person learning, but that's not the case. The ordinance, um, that was drafted is more just, uh, reducing gatherings to 50 or under, reducing restaurant capacity. And even the way it's worded, it would still allow, um, the way we're functioning does not fall, fall under that. Going even if we went back to school, it's not a gathering of 50 people because we'd be separating people into small groups and they would not be cross-contaminating. So, um, it does not affect our decision in that way.
Yeah. That's my understanding too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we would encourage, uh, everyone to, to watch the, to stream the Board of Supervisors meetings. I think they're very helpful. So, um, please feel free to do that. The next three people in line are Amy, Mason and Anna. So, um, you are up.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate everybody's time. I know a lot of this has been centered around how we start school. My concern has more to do with what the school day looks like, whether it's virtual or in classroom. At my understanding is that the upper grades, middle and high school will have four courses each semester. And I am, um, concerned about what happens to the academic courses that aren't taken specifically in that second semester when the summer slide, as they call it, for older grades is already so high. If they take an academic class such as math in their first semester, then, you know, what, how much will be retained when they restart their next grade? We're being asked to make these decisions, but I don't have any idea what either choice will look like for my child. So it is very hard to know how we would make either one work. So any clarification on scheduling, particularly in the upper grades at some point before the decision has to be made would be helpful.
Can I chime in real quick here? I will say it's now, uh, we're mandating that each school have at least two informational sessions. I've had the privilege of attending at least three of them, the one for Mountain View, the one for Woodbrook and the one for Agner-Hurt. I strongly suggest if you can attend one of those sessions because you can get much more granular logistical information about the, what a day will look like and, and what the school leaders are, are anticipating. So I would strongly encourage everyone to attend those sessions.
And while, oh, I was going to say, and, and while we're asking parents to choose, it is not a forever thing. You're not completely locked down to that.
Thanks so much. Um, I think we're on to Mason now.
Hi, uh, my name is Mason Rothenberger and I am a high school student at Western Almarle High School. I would just like to express the concern that lots of high schoolers don't want the curriculum to be cut or abridged in any way. And especially, I'm a rising junior. I'm concerned that my AP curriculum could be abridged and that would give me a disadvantage. Even though AP testing is obviously going to look very different, um, in the future. But I would just like to say, please do not abridge our curriculum. We come to high school and middle school and elementary school to learn the most that we can so that we can be prepared for college and later life. Especially, I know that you're focused on younger students, but high schoolers who are taking college credit classes are looking to get the most out of these college credits so that maybe we can save money down the road or just advance a little faster. We just want to know that our education is as high quality as it has always been. Thank you.
Shout out to a student for speaking. That makes me happy. Thank you, Mason. Yeah, delighted to see a, a student, um, in the queue. That's fantastic. Thanks, Mason. And your points are well made. And Anna is up next. Anna Rossner.
Hello, um, so far a lot of people have been talking about students and speaking for us. I'm also a student at Almarle High School. I'm going into my sophomore year in the Mesa program. And I also have two parents working at the And I also have two parents working at the hospital that I want to stay safe and healthy. More than anything, I would love to see my friends and be with them, but it is a pandemic and priorities have to change. And I am willing to make these changes to save lives. The US has just crossed four million cases with one million of these cases being in the last two weeks. And the amount of cases and the actual amount of cases is suspected to be ten times higher. We need to be rational, not sentimental. Hugging and holding students' hands is going to have to be put on hold. We need to make adjustments to save lives. I know that going back to school in person isn't going to be like me eating lunch with my friends or chatting with them in class. I'll be sitting in a chair all day and the quality of learning is probably going to be the same in person and online. For a high school student, a teacher following safety guidelines will not be able to provide much more than I can get through a computer screen. I think it's important for the county to also establish a concrete mask policy. I also think that it's important for everyone to get a good education and I've seen pretty much no details about how learning will be happening. My hope is that teachers will be doing live lectures for the whole class length with chances for student questions. But any sort of details would be incredibly important and helpful. The online education this, in the spring was incredibly minimal and I hope that the quality of education improves as well. I think that outside of exceptional circumstances, as many students should stay home as possible. As a student, students should stay home.
So two students in a row, I think is fantastic. And I can, and I just want to point out that we're all here because of, because of schools and education and lots of great comments saying how proud everyone is to have two students in a row speak up. So I think that's fantastic. And, and your points are all well taken, Anna, and also Mason, thanks again. So to both of you. And we want to hear now from, we want to hear from, let's see, Carol, we've got Anna, Caroline, and Zach. Anna, Anna Moss, our second Anna.
Can you hear me?
We can, Anna. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. I'm the mother of two high school students, but right now one is going to college. So I actually want to say for my daughter, she plead me, pleaded me to say something for her because she really wants to go back to school. Even for juniors, she got very bored and we, our experience of doing the school closing is actually a stop of education. Is totally unhold. And as a matter of fact, they already, they like one-third of their education opportunity was already sacrificed. So if, it seems that this pandemic is going to last slowly in kind of different kind of ways. But if we, we continue to, to close the school, it was be really, really bad, especially for high school students. So I would like to ask a very practical question that if the Alabama County to decided to close the school and to go online virtually, first one, I would like to have a guarantee that the education quality for high school students will be the same as in person. And there's no like, no downgrade of a grading or something. It, the first of all, I feel like the quality should be the same and the requirement upon student should be the same. That's, and thus we can reach the goal, the educational goal for students. And if, if the school really go totally virtual, I would really anticipate if the teachers still can have some teaching office hours for like, you know, individual students to schedule an appointment to visit and talk to teacher. They can wear their mask, they can have like some distances. But the school as an education entity, it cannot be totally closed forever. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Anna. Those are some really helpful comments and your points are certainly well taken. Next up is Caroline and then we'll have Zach.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can.
Great, awesome. So I am also a employee of Amarillo County. This is my fifth year in the county, my tenth year in education. My position is slightly different from your typical teacher because I don't work at one school. I actually report to all fifteen elementary schools in person within, so I get to every elementary school at least once every two weeks in person. There are other positions that are similar to mine as well. They might not necessarily hit all fifteen elementary schools or all six middle schools, for example, but they, but there are other teachers in this county who could potentially move between three or four different schools within a week. So looking at the Return to School Planning Guide, the very first bullet that you all have published states, "We will, on a daily basis, require each employee to perform a self-assessment before entering the school or workplace to affirm that they are not experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and have not, to their knowledge, been exposed to the virus." So I guess my question is, will the county commit to providing testing for staff? And this would be for all staff regardless of if they are showing symptoms. And I ask this because I know when there was a COVID scare at my husband's workplace and he called his doctor, he was told that it was going to be a minimum of waiting seven days to see if he got tested, but he first had to show symptoms. And so I worry that if I or someone else who could potentially spread this to multiple schools before we show any symptoms, could potentially basically become a typhoid mary situation and make the situation worse. Yes, there are different precautions we could take, but according to the CDC, the best thing to be, to do is to be tested and to know your status. Thanks.
Thanks so much for that comment, Caroline. And I wonder if, if, if we have a response to any of that, perhaps? If we have Eileen still on the line, perhaps Eileen Gomez might respond?
Yes, I'm still on the line and I can, I can respond to that. I, we don't have the testing capacity in this community to test everybody at the beginning of the year. I think that the physicians who are kind of the gatekeepers of that and they're referring people for testing are asking that symptomatic people be tested. The, the issue of, of asymptomatic people being tested, you could get tested today and be negative and feel pretty good, but you may have been exposed to the virus and are incubating the virus and actually test positive tomorrow. So the test only is a snapshot of your status at that moment. If you have enough of the viral load to test positive at that moment and not necessarily if you're going to be sick the next day or the next week or the next week after that. So it's not really fail-safe to, way to see if somebody is not ill with the virus.
You're on mute. Sorry, thanks. Yeah. Next up is Zach. So thanks so much, Eileen, for that. And next up is Zach.
Hi, I have a preschool-aged daughter as well as a rising fourth grader and my wife also teaches in the county. My daughter's private preschool reopened in July with her school going above and beyond the CDC and Health Department guidelines. Despite this, two teachers were exposed to COVID outside of school and one has contracted the virus. One class of five to six students has been quarantined. Given that public schools have the option of opening virtually, why should teachers and students be put at risk for in-person learning when we can predict so little about what families are exposed to outside of the school day? We have no idea how students are going to react to these distance strategies, whether they'll cooperate and accordingly whether we can keep everyone safe.
Thanks so much, Zach. That your, your points are certainly well taken and we do appreciate it. And if, if we have any board member, Katrina or Ellen, any responses to the last batch of participants who've spoken, certainly feel free to speak up. Otherwise, we do have several more people hoping to, to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and ask, we've got Tessa Farmer, Debbie Rondo, and Elizabeth Brubaker.
Great, this is Tess. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who's spent time on this today. I would also just affirm that I really agree that the teachers are the experts in this context, but I, I wanted to ask what the plans are for students with special needs. My daughter is a rising second grader. She has special needs. She's currently in the process of getting, you know, evaluated, so I don't know that those will be in place by the beginning of the school year. And while I, I understand and agree with the virtual option, I know really explicitly through speaking with her, her multiple therapists that it won't work for her. So I want to know what kind of concrete plans might be made for students who really just can't function in the virtual environment if, if the quote unquote all virtual is done.
Thanks so much, Tessa. Those are great points and those are certainly things that we're going to be responding to as soon as possible and you'll hear, hear us communicating answers out to these types of questions and comments. So thanks again. Your, your points are certainly well taken. Next up is Debbie.
Hello. Good afternoon. I hope everybody, oh, you smiled. So you can hear me. I can tell.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody for your time. This is, it's very important that everyone has a voice and so it is highly appreciated from everyone that we have a voice. I may be a bit scattered because I was jotting down things as people were asking questions about stuff that I actually have info on so that hopefully I can help a little alleviate some of it and then of course share my opinion because that's what I always do. I've been with the county as a teacher since the early eighties and have been north, south, east and west and I love kids or I wouldn't still be doing it thirty-plus years. When it comes to the online virtual learning, I want to stress that it would be developmentally appropriate for the grade levels. You wouldn't have kindergartners for any more than thirty minutes at a time and they wouldn't be sitting the whole time if they're sharing or doing whatever. It would be appropriate for the age and the curriculum would be sort of a mixture of the synchronous where you're on together. Small group, one-on-one, go back and do this, spend time off. We tried really hard even in the spring to get them off of the devices because we know that they love to play games and they're on them even when we don't want them to be. So there will be guidelines and rules that the entire county and every teacher will be following about amount of time, amount of synchronous time, things like that. And I know there were questions about the hybrid. If kids were split, who would be teaching? I can tell from our meetings that I might be teaching, say, fifth grade with a fifth grade teacher so that we both have twelve kids, but we'd be co-planning and anything that I might not feel totally comfortable, if I'm not a fifth grade teacher, she would come in and teach. For me, it would be math probably. So they would have a teacher with them and they would be planned with the teacher of the grade level. So again, it wouldn't just be babysitting. I want to make sure that everyone knows that we have been checking and connecting. I am still talking to kids over the summer because I love them and I don't want them traumatized. And if they can't see me, they can see me on Skype. Building that community virtually is crucial so that the trauma can be as alleviated as possible for them to be able to see each other and share each other. In the school building, we can't share materials. Primary children learn by doing. Oh, nope, you can't build that. No, you can't create that. No, you can't touch those crayons because we can't share materials. I don't have twelve different block sets or whatever. They, they can't do it together and they would have to be in their space. You talk about a six-year-old who can't sit in a chair. Well, they're not going to be wanting to sit in that chair for, for six hours either. As a primary teacher, you need phonemic awareness and letters and sounds by looking at their lips and hearing what they say and you can't do that with a mask on. So we can, okay, thank you.
Hey Debbie, thanks so much. We appreciate it. And I know you've got more. It sounds like you might have more comments. Please do feel free to touch base with me or to add those into the chat box here. I just want to make sure that we keep moving for those who have had their hands up. I think, thank you though. Yeah. Next up is Elizabeth Brubaker.
Hi, I am a rising junior at Alamo High School and I've talked to a lot of my friends and a big concern that we've had that I've heard over and over again is the four-by-four schedule with our AP classes. With AP, it's very important to us because we can get the college credit, but our concern is if we have those classes in the beginning of the year, we might forget that content by the end or the other way. It just, it's a whole lot of content to cover. I mean, I was a WAP student and I had three hours of homework within two days because we had to get through thirty chapters of the book outlining. And I'm concerned that if that's suppressed into half of the year, every single night I have to read half of the chapter. And that seems crazy. And to cover all of the WAP material and to absorb it to the point where someone could take the test and do well, I don't see how this four-by-four schedule is plausible for people who are taking multiple APs. And I think a lot of my friends were really concerned because this is something that's important to us as we're all really high achievers and we feel as if this schedule is going to inhibit us from being successful with these classes and getting all that we wanted from high school. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. It's great again to hear from students and we've got all these articulate students speaking up, which is really exciting and we're glad that you all are engaged as well as everyone else. So that's wonderful. We have time for two more questions. We've got the Trobax and Jeff Handler up. So if, if you two are ready to participate, we would love to hear from you.
I can.
Hi. Hi, this is Sheila Crowback. I'm going to send you guys, Crowback. Yeah, so Sheila Crowback, I'm a parent of two children. One will be a fourth grader this year and one is entering middle school. And I'm also a pediatric speech language therapist in the community. I want to thank everyone because I think that participating in this type of forum is so important to hear everyone's perspectives and to hear everyone's questions and ideas. And so thank you all for that. A couple times during today's commentary, people have kind of referred to the private schools and life as usual and those types of things. And I just want to speak from experience as I reach out to all of those schools that happen to impact some of the children and families that I work with that no one is going back to life as usual. Those private schools are making significant adjustments and they also tend to be smaller and have some different resources that they can use in order to follow the guidelines and to meet the needs of their students and their families. But I think it's important to put that into perspective. For me, what I wanted to bring up today and what I wanted to ask particularly of the school board is that I think that parents are being asked to make a very important decision about their child's education and what's going to happen for their family unit in the next school year. And I, I think we've heard this a few times today as well, that it's hard to make that decision without all of the information about what that instructional model is going to look like. A lot of time and energy has been spent on figuring out building space and hand sanitizer and PPE and bus transportation. And I think all of those things are hugely important and I recognize the importance of those. But it's very hard to make a decision when you're not sure what the day is going to look like. And one of the things that I would ask for the school board and the county administrators to speak to or make note of, and I think other counties, I believe Charlottesville City did this, is to really share with our community the pros and cons of the virtual model versus the in-person model in terms of our staff. I attended our town hall meeting earlier today for my children's elementary school and also a PTO meeting recently and asked, you know, do we actually physically have enough staff in the building to teach our children? Who is that staff? Who's really in the classroom with my child?
Yeah, these, thank you so much. Yeah, this, this is all very productive and I think these are some great questions that you're, that you're submitting to us. So we are absolutely going to look into these kinds of things and you'll be hearing more from us as soon as, as soon as possible about all of this. So we are absolutely going to look into these kinds of things, and you'll be hearing more from us as soon as, as soon as possible about all of this.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I, thank you. Yeah. And I do just, I want to hand it over to Jeff Handler, who will be our last, um, comment for today.
No pressure. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I have a few things I want to say. I'm going to try and do it in two minutes. Um, I first want to talk about the chat and just say that, uh, I think CO has left. But it's pretty shameful to see comments in the chat saying that teachers are getting what they want here and are lazy and just getting out of doing their work, which I've seen echoed in the chat. Um, that couldn't be farther from the case. I have a rising first grader and a rising fourth grader. And I'm also a teacher, and I just want to reiterate that that is pretty pitiful that that's what this chat is for, forum is being used for. And it's not true, and I want to make sure that it's heard. That's not true. Um, I also just want to say, I do believe that virtual learning, um, will be incredibly different than it was in the spring. And that if teachers were at the table when a lot of these plans are being made, I think that a lot of these questions could be answered because parents want to know what things look like. And teachers are the ones that know. The people that make decisions about what happens in a classroom are teachers. And so I think that this is just reiterating the point that, um, that teachers needed to have been asked this in May when we were doing this. We should have been really planning ahead, and we're behind now. Um, I also, um, just want to say that I find it really, I want to know from the school board members how they're reaching out to our Spanish-speaking families. They are not in this chat. They are not in this space. They weren't here yesterday. And what efforts are being made to look at our families who maybe aren't able to attend a Zoom forum, which I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but none of this is being translated? And how are we reaching out to those families where COVID is, is in those communities? It's running rampant in communities where a lot of our Spanish-speaking families live, and they don't have a seat at this table, or so it appears. And how is the school board reaching out to them?
Thanks so much, Jeff. I think that's, um, those are some really helpful questions as well. Um, I'm happy to give Katrina and Ellen a moment to speak if they can right now. Um, to, not just to you, but to the rest of the commenters and the rest of the people who are participating right now. Um, our time is up. It's, it's three minutes past at this point. But, um, but we do want to make sure that Katrina and Ellen have a moment just to, to comment as we close up.
I just want to say that, um, you know, we all wish we weren't in this situation. It's frustrating for all of us. Uh, it's, and school board members are not immune to any of these problems because we have kids in the system and we have to work. And, uh, a lot of the problems are, are similar. So we're, we're not immune to any of these frustrations. Um, I, I do think for a lot of these questions that we do not have the answers for today probably can be best, best answered by attending your school's, um, Zoom forums. And if you look on your school's website and contact your principal, if those meetings aren't posted, because some of the, the granular detail are handled at the individual school level. That's my best suggestion for some of those, um, detailed questions that, that are not, um, not answered today. And do keep checking back at the school website, which is updated. I believe it was updated even as recently as this morning. Again, uh, no one wants to be in this situation. I don't believe that it, it had to be this bad. Um, I have appreciated the activism and the emails that I've seen, and I really hope that that continues. Uh, but I want you to take it a little bit further to the state and the federal level because the school systems are left dealing with a lot of the problems that have trickled down to us from inaction at so many other levels. Um, so, so please, um, keep pushing to make things better. I don't think, um, I don't think that, that this has to be the disaster that some of us are, are making it out to be. I think that this can also be an opportunity for us to fix some of the things that we thought were wrong with schools anyway. Um, the disruption, as awful as it is, is also an incredible opportunity for us to change things and make this work, uh, make the school system work for all of our students, some of who were already being left behind. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we can make the best out of a bad situation. But thanks for attending.
Me. Um, yeah, I would, one, thank you, everyone who showed up today. Thank you, everyone who shared your thoughts. Thank you to everyone who posed questions. I am in awe of how many people, um, were willing and felt comfortable to share opinions that were, are oftentimes different and not necessarily in agreement, and that takes courage, and I appreciate it. Uh, that being said, I, I took notes. Um, I would say if I had to, if I was, I'm, I'm a former teacher. So if I had to do like an exit ticket and summarize what I would have heard, something that resonated with me is that parents are feeling like they're having to do decision-making, very important decision-making without the facts, all the facts that they want. Um, and I would, I would agree that, um, it's very difficult. And I would encourage people to attend the Zoom meetings, to continue to ask questions. And I would, I would offer that nothing, um, that is being decided right now is set in stone. Everything is, um, changing. The information we have is changing. And so, um, it's not necessarily the case that the decision that you make on that, the survey is gonna, is gonna be what your child is doing for the whole school year. So I don't know if that helps, but that's a takeaway that I had, um, along with a few other things. And then, um, I do want to say, uh, I'm, I'm a parent of, I have a six-year-old and a five-year-old. And I, I imagine that as a collective body in the community, we're coming to terms with the fact that the fall is not going to be back to normal like maybe we were anticipating. Um, and at first, that was really upsetting to me as a parent. Um, I was worried about my children. I, I still maybe am. But I do think, to echo what Ellen says, there's a lot of optimism to be had. Um, our kids are incredibly resilient, as many people spoke to. And I know as a school division that we will be able to continue to serve our students, although not the ideal way right now. Um, hopefully in the future. And, and I'm, I'm just optimistic. I'm trying to hold on to the optimistic note that our kids are going to do all right, and they're going to get educated. And, and I just want to leave with that. Thanks so much to everyone for joining us, to Katrina and Ellen for, also for, for doing this. And, um, remember that we have another town hall on Monday night at 6:00 PM. Um, so we, we hope that people will join us then as well. Um, but I think this is really fantastic and productive discussion that we're having now. Keep checking the website, k12albemoral.org. There's lots of information. It does get updated, uh, to, we keep it current. Um, send emails, send questions. Um, feel free to, to do all of the touching base with us that you need to do. And so much to everyone. Yeah, Katrina. Can I add on? Because there was a comment made about translation, which, um, we're welcome to feedback for this town hall. I don't know if anyone went to both of them, but we're working around the clock to try to give you guys the best experience. So I, I heard feedback about, um, chat moderation and, um, and translation. And I will say that those school-specific Zoom meetings are generally, um, offering a translated version. So please keep that in mind if you know families that are having difficulty accessing and providing input in a way that works for them. So that's all. And these will be posted on YouTube, um, very soon. So keep an eye out for that if you need to be able to check and see that. Thanks so much, everybody, for joining us. Thank you.